6:19 PM. Note, this meeting is also being conducted as a hybrid meeting. You may remotely access the meeting through the digital platforms listed below, which is our Facebook Lawrence City Council page and our YouTube Lawrence City Council page. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of Housing Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may either attend in person or at the locations that I had just mentioned. Here with us today are our voting members. To my right is our City Council President and Counselor-at-Large, Giovanni Rodriguez. To my left is our Vice Chair and Counselor for District A, Fidelina Santiago, and our Counselor for District F, Mark LaPlante. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance before we commence this meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So there are no minutes for approval, so we're gonna get straight to the agenda. If you guys don't mind, I'm gonna take two items out of order. I believe we have some visitors that we would like to attend to and make sure we get this item out of the way. Item number 17225 under New Business, which is Grant of Utility Easement to EverSource Gas Company for the installation of utility infrastructure at 1-9 Hoffman Street, also known as 207 Marston Street. We have our Planning Director, Daniel McCarthy. If you could please come before us to speak on this item.
So 17225.
Good evening Chairman, I'm all, good evening Counselors.
Is the mic on?
Is it on? Daniel McCarthy, Planning Director for the City of Lawrence. I'm here with Tanner Hilsop, who's an engineer with the EverSource Gas Company. And we're here to ask for the city allow the granting of an easement, a utility easement for the installation of some gas equipment on Hoffman Street. This, the part of, the projects are typically done in the public right of way. But in this case, Hoffman Street is a very narrow right of way. And the land that the easement is gonna be on is part of a city parcel that's known better as 207 Marston Street. And you probably know more familiar with it that it's a portion of the Tom Borello site. This is a small corner. The initial plans that were divined by EverSource had this going on into the, closer to the intersection of Marston Street and Hoffman Street. So we negotiated with EverSource to get these, the equipment moved to the farthest point on this lot so that it won't interfere with the future redevelopment of this property. And it's been reviewed by the city attorney. It's been reviewed by the city engineers. And I'm here to answer any questions. As I mentioned, Tanner is here on behalf of EverSource to also answer any questions.
Discussions?
I've got a question.
Sure, you have the floor, Counsel LaPlante.
I've got no issues with the gas lines. I got no issues with placing it there. It's not my district. Others represent the entire city. I get the Council President, so we might have some more to say about that. But, or, and the county's here, right?
Yes, that's mine.
And the District Counselors here, so. But I'm just curious as to why, why there's a need for this easement. Is there a growth in that area? Was there not a gas line there before? I'm just curious as to the underlying reason as to why there needs to be an easement and why infrastructure needs to be repaired there.
Yep, hi, I'm Tanner Highslop, Project Engineer with EverSource Gas. So currently, there is no gas infrastructure for the new high-pressure system. So, a little background. Lawrence and surrounding areas have a lot of low-pressure, old infrastructure gas mains. And you may have seen that we are out there replacing the old infrastructure. You might see our box trucks. But we have multiple projects going on. And with that, we're getting rid of the old, old low-pressure system. And we're expanding our high-pressure system. It's a more reliable, more safe system. And as we expand it, we have to add additional sources. And this is one of those additional sources. So in that area, there used to be low pressure. We're bringing in high pressure. And to prepare for the future, when the high-pressure system will just get bigger, we're adding this additional source to prepare for that.
So, just two reactions. When you're talking like this, it's bringing back memories, for me, of the Merrimack Valley gas crisis that took place in 2018. I represented the epicenter of that, of that event. And where half of the city had to leave, all the south side had to leave the city. And you're probably familiar with that as well.
Yes, yeah.
And at the time, we knew that there was a lot of problems after the event that we needed to restructure all of our infrastructure on the south side of the city because of that.
Yes.
I was told at the time, the north side is no different than the south side. The infrastructure on this north side is similar to the infrastructure on the south side. And if we don't get our act together again, on the north side, it could repeat itself. I mean, the chances until we do something. Is this part, what I'm hearing, is this part of the revamping that needs to be done to safeguard our residents on the north side?
No, no.
No?
That was, that was previously done, so.
Okay.
We have.
And that's good to hear, because I'm not sure that everybody knows about the north side and that it's been, you guys are clear. So it's good for us to hear that.
There are, there is still low-pressure gas mains, but that's not the safety concern.
Okay.
The safety concern was the regulator stations that cut the pressure down. And those have been remediated. The problems that arose back in 2018, those have been remediated, all the regulator stations.
On the entire city now?
In the entire city and Methuen and all surrounding cities, yeah.
Okay. I'll stop there. I'm sure the Counselors represent the, I have one more to say.
Counselor Santiago, you have the floor.
Thank you, madam. And I have a question about the, before you doing the construction, the, before you doing your repair and putting the, the gas, we wanna know, or I would like to know, I wanna speak myself, about the constituent, they will have any suspense for the service when you are still working in the system?
No, no, no service will be interrupted during any of the construction for this project.
And another question that I have is about, the constituent called me and close to this area is Stainer Street. I have the constituent, she called me because they made some repair the gas. I called DPW and they told me they don't repair the hall because the company made it. And you didn't fix it, or I don't know you, when I say you, it's the company. Your company didn't fix the, the street. They, they do the repair, but they didn't fix it like before it was. And that's another situation caused with the constituent. And I would like, if you do the hall, we would like to do, to leave the place be, be like the same or better than you found it.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, we try to make it as we found it or better. If there are any issues that arise, like, it sounds like there may have been one, they can contact, we have a Damage Prevention or Restoration Department that fields calls like that all the time. So if, if the constituent or gas customer has an issue with the way their yard or driveway or whatever it may have been was restored, they're more than willing to reach out to our restoration.
I would like to have those contacted because I got, the resident still called me.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure what the address, address of that customer was.
If that one said Hoffman Street and Marston, that's the area. And the, the constituent that I have now, the problem is in Stainer Street. It's, it's like the second street after that. It's, it's the same area.
Okay, alright, yeah. We were just in the intersection there, so it might have been something else. But they're still more than willing to, I'll give you a contact.
Please, thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, essentially, something that we need to disclose is that the parcel, the small portion, the small parcel that we're talking about, it's on the corner right around the Tom Borello site. And the size of, of the location is about 55 by 12.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's about 660 square feet that you guys are gonna be using?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, for the future development of that corner, I know that that corner has been cleared for development, for the future development of the corner. If that's any issues that is gonna bring up, that question is more for the city.
Yes, 'cause part, part of the, part of the schedule and the reasoning why this work's coming forward at this time is because we're in the midst of redoing the intersection of Marston Street and Hay, in, in that whole intersection. So the goal is to get this work done prior to the major work done so that when we go back in, we'll redo the entire street with new asphalt. And there'll be no need to, to have to dig up Marston Street or East Hable Street again. I think that's an important part of it. The first call for the structure was this, this was gonna be closer to the intersection. And that's why we negotiated with EverSource to move it further away from the intersection of Marston Street so that the equipment would be not interfering with any future projects or the current work. But that's, I think, all part of the plan and it's why we're doing this in a very.
So essentially, the question, it's around the lot. It, because this development of this project will be on a lot that is owned by the city. So the reminding of the lot, which is the whole corner.
It'll, it's actually the land lot.
Huh?
Yeah, it's actually gonna be on that lot. It's, the address is identified as 207, which is the front portion of the Tom Borello lot. But this area is part of a subdivision that was adopted by the city. That was the Hoffman Street subdivision. So when they divided the, the housing on Hoffman Street, this lot was left over and has never developed.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying at the beginning. That the section of the Tom Borello site has been cleared for development because it's been subdivided.
Yes.
And, and, and the section of the project is gonna be 55 by 12 within the lot that is already being cleared.
Correct.
So for future development of that lot, if there is any potential issues?
That's correct, yes.
So the question is, is there is any potential issue for future development on that specific lot that has been cleared from the Tom Borello site?
So, that's, that's part of the reason why we, we negotiated to move it, where the original equipment was gonna go.
The question is, if it is gonna be any issues?
Would interfere with the development.
So it's, it's gonna be no issues?
So now, now there's gonna be no issues, because we're moving it down. If you look at the property down on Hoffman Street, there's a fence. And everybody assumes that Tom Borello property begins on the other side of the fence. It doesn't, actually comes 10 feet closer to the street. And that's where it's gonna be. It's not gonna be on the other side of fence, it's gonna be right on the edge of the lot.
So the answer is, McCarthy, is whether or not it's gonna be any issues in the future for the development of that specific lot?
It will not interfere with it.
Okay, it will not interfere. I wanna make sure that it, that's, that's been brought up. When it comes to the notification, which is very important to the abutters. So how far you guys need to go by law when it comes to the notifications of the abutters, when it comes to a potential project on a specific lot related to construction or gas, in this case?
I think that depends on where you look on the parcel as a whole. We were, right now, we're finished all our projects. The city's finished all their projects on the Tom Borello site moving forward. And right now, we're in the process of analyzing it for development, for national development.
I guess that you're not understanding my questioning. My question is around the notice that need to be sent to the abutters.
Oh, for the gas, for project?
For any project related to construction or gas, if the aborder were notified. That's my question. I think that you're kinda like, I don't know, can you guys hear me?
I, I, I know we were responsible for selling, sending notices for our project on Marston Street. I'm not sure, do notices sent?
Yeah, so, any, any gas construction project letters get sent out typically in both English and Spanish.
So just for next meeting, I would like to know, like, who abutters were notified around there?
I'm not exact on who was.
What I mean, for next meeting, just, if you have that information in your office, just bring it up for next meeting for discussion, okay? No, I don't have any more question.
Um, I, I have some questions. What is the duration of this project?
So, we are already like midway through the project. We, there was a lot, a lot of the project was installing gas main through the intersection of East Hayes Road and Marston Street there. We're across the intersection onto Hoffman Ave now. And we were just waiting for the approval of this easement to continue. And with the approval of said easement, we will be finished by the fall of this year, hopefully.
Fall?
Depending on when it gets approved. I know it's not approved yet, so.
Okay. Fall of this year, that's quite some time. So are, is there gonna be an effect on either the quality of life to nearby residents? I'm not sure if there's business owners. Is there, is there gonna be an issue or challenges with traffic? Like, do you guys do a study before doing these type of projects that, you know, takes?
We, we talk with local police. So we work with the police department on any traffic control measures that are needed. I know for the first half of this project, when we were working through the intersection, we had police details and
Okay.
Traffic board signs up, so. We, we take it into effect, not to say that we do a study per se, but we, we asked the local police department who are familiar with traffic.
I understand. And the reason why I'm saying all of this is because oftentimes, you know, us as counselors, we meet face-to-face directly with affected parties.
Yes.
And recently, we, you know, we've seen some projects where it, it's from the gas company and it's affected businesses because these projects are taking place during the daytime, during like the most important, pretty much hours of their operation. And at the end of the day, we're the ones that get the complaints. And then, on the resident side of things, we are the ones that receive complaints because of maybe debris and, and trash or things that sometimes, you know, you guys are not picking up and it is left behind. Or, you know, again, it's affecting the quality of life of, of residents that are nearby. So that's something that I wanna make sure, as I am seeing some of these new items for approval, that I am asking these type of questions and ensuring that we're, we're keeping them in mind while simultaneously getting these projects done, because I understand the importance of it. Did you wanted to? Sure, of course, I'm not sure if, are you all set? Is there anything, any like last comments that you wanted to make based on what I just said?
I, I'll just say that Hoffman Ave is a one-way street. So we will keep like a lane open for people to come in and out. I think it's mostly residential.
Okay.
Denon Street. There is, I know the business on the corner there. But we should not be affecting them any longer. We're through the intersection, so.
Okay.
On that end, we should be all set.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Members of the Housing Committee. I got a text already and a call about this issue. No abutters were notified. I talked to somebody at Hoffman Ave that never got notification. Generally, this department is supposed to send you the photocopies of the certified letters they sent out to the abutters. I don't know if you have that in your packet. People at home are surprised what's going on. This department habitually presents all kinds of projects without having a PowerPoint. So you people have the prints, you know what's going on. We have absolutely no idea. The citizens, the taxpayers, as Counselor Santiago said, have no idea what's happening. There's never any graphics. In any other community, the citizens would get the dignity and respect of a proper presentation to know what's happening in their neighborhood. But this doesn't happen to Lawrence, despite your efforts to tell these people to be prepared. I haven't heard one straight answer yet. You asked about the quality of life, you talked about the police details. Earlier, Mr. McCarthy mentioned that this station or location of this equipment is being put at the farthest corner of the lot, I believe that's what you said. However, it's at the closest point to the residence on Hoffman Avenue. So the people that are there are just being dumped on. Once again, the people of Lawrence are being treated like mushrooms. You know what that is? They keep them in the dark and they feed them manure. I haven't heard a straight answer tonight. People don't know what's happening in their neighborhood. We don't know if this is above ground, below ground. And we're getting a lot of obfuscation here with these answers. Thank you, appreciate the time.
Did you guys want to respond to that, considering that one of the questions, I believe, Council President had asked if there was any notification sent out, and you guys said yes?
Yes, typically, there should have been. I will, I will check whether or not it was done. I also don't want residents to get confused, this project, with the other city project that's going on in that intersection. You may have seen a lot of equipment out there recently. That is not our project. There may be frustrations with that project, and I don't want them to get confused as it would be very easy to. I don't know if that gentleman's frustration was with that project or our project, because we haven't been out there since last year, so.
I got it, thank you. And some of those frustrations, it's on us to offset that, you know, it's our duty. And we need to be doing our part in, and doing our due diligence in notifying residents, because that's part of where like the major frustration comes from. City Council President, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I wanted to get to understand the, the whole project. So essentially, you're gonna have an spare bolt, a monitor bolt, a control bolt, a pragmatic cabinet, and electrical cabinet. So you're gonna have two cabinets and, and a couple of other equipments on there. How big are those cabinets?
The cabinets, they take a footprint of about, I'd say, two feet by two feet. And then, there's three underground vaults, which is what you were just talking about, the control, monitor, and spare. So this is the new standard regulator station design. We've installed them recently in Lawrence at other locations. As such, Providence at Ames, we recently installed a station just like this one.
Oh.
Parkett Saunders in Lawrence, recently installed one. So this is no different than those ones, so.
And, and essentially, the, the purpose, as you mentioned before, is to increase pressure or pressure regulator in the area?
Yeah, the, the reason is, imagine like a, a tree trunk. And this will provide like a source for the tree trunk. And then, the, the branches are like all the side streets kinda. And so the, we're providing another source, you could say, of like water for the tree trunk. So I don't know if that made much sense?
No, 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 I mean, I just wanna make sure, like, what is, what is visible? What is on the, what is actually on the?
So you'll see the two cabinets, those will be visible.
And then, things are gonna be on the ground.
Yeah, you'll see that.
That is assets from the top.
Yeah, if you, if you walk, if you're walking there, you will see the cover, but they'll be flush with the ground. So you'll, you'll see the two cabinets, basically.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much.
Any further questions? Counsel LaPlante, you have the floor.
Yeah, just very quickly, I'm gonna explain my vote before I vote. I'm gonna be following the District Counselor's lead on this. So if she votes for it, I'll be voting for it. If she votes against it, I'll be voting against it, or tables, or whatever. This is her neighborhood, this is her district, and I respect that. And she knows what's best for the people that she represents. So that's what I'm, that's my plan this evening, thank you.
I'll make a motion to send it to the full council as a committee report.
There's a motion on table, can I get a second?
Make a motion to table.
Second.
A motion has been made to table this item, seconded by our Counselor Santiago. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda would be one. Oh, okay, go ahead.
No, no, no.
Do you want? So, okay, just to give clarity, we have decided to table this item. Are we gonna table for further, obviously for further discussion? From my part, definitely, there needs to be discussions and at least demonstration that you guys have done your part to notify the residents regarding this project. I'm not sure if any other counselors want to add. You know, if you wanna add, what is it that you would like to see from Director McCarthy and our representative from the gas company in order for them to receive an approval for our next meeting?
I would like to see a proper presentation and advertise the constituent. Because like my constituents said earlier, they need to be respectful and we have to respect them and to they expect, they have to expect the, any step happen in the area. And that's why we need, we need a formal presentation about it.
Counselor, you just, you have the floor?
No, I just wanna to see in case that we're gonna discuss that we expect them to have a meeting probably in, potentially in two weeks. So in two weeks, those concerns should be addressed.
I'll be the second.
Alright. So are you guys all set? Do you have any questions regarding to this item being tabled? Alright. The next item on the agenda is 17325, Acceptance of an Easement from Whitmore Company and Glen Street Associates to the City of Lawrence for the operation of a freight rail line to the Lawrence Industri- I can't talk today. Freight rail line to the Lawrence Industrial Park at 30 Glen Street. We have our Planning Director, Daniel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Good evening. Good evening, Counselors. Daniel McCarthy again. In the, under the document 173, the city is requesting an easement to be granted to the city for the purposes of the reconstruction of the, the industrial freight rail that exists within the city's industrial park on Glen Street and Shepherd Street. This is a project that's been ongoing for several years. I know some of the councils in this office have worked on this over the years. We originally worked with PNM and then CSX. Two summers ago, we constructed about a quarter mile of new rail from Broadway to the Beacon Street intersection. This is the continuation of that project. There are actually two projects going on. One is a, is a state and federal project. It's gonna be continuing a line and redeveloping on Glen Street, removing the rail line from the Glen Street, the middle of Glen Street where it now rides. It's gonna go to the side of the street. Then it's gonna turn into the industrial park. It currently turns into the industrial park at a, at a more than 30-degree curve, which CSX and MBTA say is too sharp a curve to negotiate and safely. That's why we've had several derailments down in this neighborhood. The new work is gonna modify this to a 15-degree curve. But to do that, to accomplish this, this turn in the radius, we need to cross a piece of land that is currently owned by Whitmore Company. And Whitmore Company's been partnering with us for the entire project. You have a little map of this design in there. You've got a copy of the easement. You have a little map of this design in there, you've got a copy of the easement. So this is a grant to get this between our public way and join the city-owned parcel of land between Glen Street and Shepherd Street where the industrial rail spur currently exists. And this is all to upgrade the improvement of industrial service freight rail to the, to the industrial park. I have with me Bridget Tipton and Leon St. Germain, they are both from the Whitmore Company, and they're here to answer any questions about this, the nature of the project.
Okay. You have the floor, Council President.
Well, thank you again for being here and explaining this. So essentially, just to clarify, now, now we're not giving out an easement, we are actually receiving an easement from-
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any, Council LaPlante, you have the floor?
Yeah, so, thank you very much Madam Chair. This project has been going on, how many years? I mean, we're talking five, six, it's been a while, right? This whole easement issue and the starts and the stops and the starts and the stop. It's not my district, it's in District D, but I, I remember very distinctly when the previous councillor was there for, that represented that area that, that, you know, we had to take, we were pushing this thing along as best we can because we saw what the, what the improvements could be for not only economic development, but also dealing with safety issues, which is what you've highlighted this evening, and potentially, you know, there's other extensions that could be part of it as well. And we're trying to, if we're a pro-business city, that we claim that we are, the partnerships that we have formed with Mass DOT and MBTA and all the other alphabet soup agencies that are out there to try to get this thing through the goal line has been both frustrating and I've heard about it, but also it'd be great to get this thing passed. I'm not sure if this is the last out of all these things that will complete this project to make this thing done, but I know this is an important piece to it. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting it tonight and, and getting this project completed, finished, or advanced. Thank you.
I see that our, our Madam Vice Chair and the district councillor for this specific easement is here with us. I'm not sure if you, do you wish to say anything in regards to this item? The same way we, we try to respect every councillor and what their opinion is when something is being done in their district.
Thank you, Chair Marvel, thank you. Good evening, colleagues. Stephanie France, City Council Vice President and District D Councillor. I'm going to say, this project, as Council LaPlante mentioned, has been ongoing before my tenure, is one of the bigger projects that came onto my plate very early on. And I just, I'm fully in support of it and I would like to thank the whole team, Director McCarthy, Whitmore, and all state-level stakeholders that have been working on this, Senator Payano as well, and other state representatives. We've been working on this a lot, very often, and I believe, I don't know if you still, if you guys still hold weekly meetings, but they were holding weekly, weekly meetings, taking detailed notes of the projects, and this isn't, especially in the safety aspect, but this is an improvement that that area of District E needs, and I just look forward for it to, to be accomplished.
Okay, councillors, any other, any further discussions? Is there anything, Mr. McCarthy, anything on your end before we move forward with voting?
I don't think so. I, I know, I had Mr. St. Germain here to speak about the problems they've had in the past and how we're leaving it, if you wanna, Leon would like to speak about that?
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'm Leon St. Germain, the plant manager for Whitmore. Been with the company 13 years. This has been a love of mine to upgrade the over 100-year-old track into our facility. It's the lifeblood of Whitmore. It's been detailed noted in all the projects, how important it is to keep our lifeblood going for, for the company. The easement is basically, the curve is a 32-degree curve, it's, it's an old curve for short rail cars, short engines. The new curve that they're putting in is gonna be a 15-degree curve, and that will accommodate the larger rail cars, bigger engines, and, and safety aspect as well.
Okay. Okay, councillors, I'm looking for a recommendation, is there any?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to the full council, I'll make a motion to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. A motion has been made, seconded by Council Santiago. All those in favor say aye. Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, moving forward to the top of the agenda, we have under new business, item 20425, disposition of real property 389 Water Street, map 204 lot 22. We have with us our acting community development director, Charlene Pasqual. If you could please discuss on this matter, thank you.
Sure. Good evening councillors, thank you for having us. My name is Charlene Pasqual, I'm the acting director for community development, as stated, 360 Merrimack Street, Lawrence, Mass. Before you, item number 204-25, disposition of real property 389 Water Street.
Do you mind just going into further detail regarding the RFP process? I'm seeing that we received two, there was issues with one, and I believe in this package, is there a recommendation on your end to move forward with-
Absolutely.
-one of the RFPs, if you'd mind kinda getting into that, please?
Absolutely. Just for some background for the councillors and also for anyone watching online, we're, the property in question is 389 Water Street, map 204 lot 22. It's a total of 18,800 square feet in a residential three neighborhood. It is a vacant lot. The assessed value is $270,000 at the moment, and the estimated annual tax value stated is $2,376. Where before you, because the RFP was made public and conducted, and we have sent you guys the results of that RFP and the conclusion and the recommendation in the packet submitted to you guys for review. Just to give you a summary, you're with me, I have a couple items today, big packet. So, our chief procurement officer who's in the chambers with us, Rosanna Del Rosario, she prepared this memorandum for you guys on her behalf. So, in this memo, it has included the vendor names, so it identifies who participated in our RFP process, their proposal, and their notes, or our notes for you guys. So we received three RFP packages. These two that are noted in the package were reviewed and considered. The third submission received in response to the request for proposals, this proposal titled "Raising Champions, One Goal at a Time" was submitted by this constituent. It was disqualified because it was a late submission. So, the remaining two proposals, one was deemed responsive and responsible, having met all qualifying criterias and specifications outlined in our scope of services. The evaluation committee reviewed and scored the proposals and based on technical qualifications, relevant experiences, and overall responsiveness. The review committee then conducted an evaluation process in the presence of the mayor. Committee members in attendance included Frank Cirillo, Dan McCarthy, Charlene Pasqual, Tim Hooten, Perla Ortiz, and Ramona Ceballos. After careful consideration, the committee unanimously found Sueño's Basketball to have submitted the most advantaged proposal, particularly due to the strong outstanding, their strong outstanding of the city's vision for this property. With your approval, the review committee recommends awarding the real estate property to Sueño's Basketball and proceeding with the contract process.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is there proposal attached to these, these documents?
So the proposals I have here with me, just for transparency, they're not attached because per 30B laws, we're supposed to submit just our recommendation, and you either approve, deny, or send it up as a favorable recommendation, or the way that you guys wanna vote.
Okay.
But they are available upon request.
Point of information.
You have the floor, Council President.
Can you read this section, chapter 30B that actually denied us from seeing these and make it a public?
I don't have the actual clause with me because I'm not carrying 30B laws with me on hand, but I could provide it for you.
You stated.
I'm sorry?
You stated.
You're asking me to read it?
No, no, I said, you stated as per the chapter 30B, and then it would be nice for the public to know where in chapter 30B it says that specific thing that you mentioned.
I don't have it with me. I can provide it for you guys if you guys need it.
Yeah, I was just curious because, you know, despite, you know, I'm, anything that has to do with the youth, if it makes sense, obviously, everything, everything has to make sense.
Absolutely.
But despite me being in favor of something, I still would wanna see the proposal myself if I could legally see it. No, no, I'm like questioning myself. I have questions, and this is obviously not, it has nothing to do with you, but this is something I would love for Sueño's to come before us, because I'm pretty sure many of us would have questions.
So the representative for Sueño's Basketball is here tonight?
Oh.
And he can step forward.
Okay. Are they here?
Good evening councillors.
Oh, good evening, Ms. Del Rosario, how are you?
Purchasing agent, City of Lawrence. So I do have the package here for transparency, as Charlene mentioned. It's not that the council is prohibited to accessing this, it's just that the disposition process does not specifically says that the city council has to review them before we actually enter into a contract with the winner of the RFP. But I did brought them for you guys, so you can see them.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair.
You have the floor, Council President.
Well, this is the thing, Madam Chair. Now, we, we are talking about different thing, like, we have a proposal of a, of a municipal and city-owned property that we're gonna do the disposition process, and you guys are focusing more to look into the disposition process, to follow the disposition process instead of providing the documentation. We definitely would like to see the qualifying criterias for both of the, of the project. We would like to see the project.
When we-
Wait, 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 I haven't finished. We would like to see the project because it would be nice for us to know what's gonna happen. It is not about, oh, the disposition process is for you to approve, deny, or send it to whatever recommendation you want. We have no documentation whatsoever other than, than the recommendation for contract award that is here from the purchasing agent. This is not how we go, how it goes.
I can answer.
Yeah, no problem. This is not how it goes. We have the right to definitely see what's gonna happen up there on any type of parcel. I have all the questions related to the process as well, but in the meantime, I was looking, just like Council Mammo was saying, I was also looking for, to see the project, what's gonna, to get excited.
Right. No, I understand.
To be able to say, wow, this is amazing.
So to answer your question, and I think it's a valid question, when we came before you guys to declare this property surplus at the full council that it was referred down to housing committee, the only way that we can move forward with a RFP process per your request is for us to share an RFP package with you guys, which we did. We shared the RFP process, we honored your desire to see a youth development there. We told you that if there was anything that would come before you that was not a youth development, that we will also address it with you guys, and we did exactly what we were asked.
Yes, I should do that.
You still have the floor.
Sure, thank you. Yes, I agree with that, 100%. That was exactly what we asked. Actually, that was, that was exactly what we agreed upon-
Right.
-your proposal.
Right.
You guys proposed to have a youth development, development up there. We agree on that because we truly believe that it, it's fine having a development that way. But, it was not because of our desire necessarily, it was proposed to us, and we agree upon that. But that doesn't take away the fact that we should evaluate for the disposition portion of it, which is basically the second part of the process. We should evaluate what, what, what come out of that RFP.
Absolutely.
If something beautiful come out of that RFP, we have the right to, to continue with the process, to do the disposition, to know, to see, and to actually evaluate, just like we, we have done in the, in previous parcels when it comes to a parcel that is gonna be developed for a duplex perhaps. We see the project, we see what's, what's, what is it that is being proposed. So, that's the thing, like, when we get to that point, like, oh, the disposition process says that, and you're only gonna be able to see that, and we're providing this as a part of the transparency process, that kinda like, you know, get, take away from me to get excited about putting a vote on that, on, on that project that we're probably excited about.
No, I understand that.
It's like, it's not about, you guys should only be looking at this, no. Be full transparent and provided, and we be happy, the public gonna be happy, and once we get it, it's a public information, everybody gonna be able to see it.
Right.
It is, it is, it is a public parcel. We don't own it.
And we did-
The city owns it.
And we did advertise for a youth development, and we received at least the other one, the one that we were able to review, because the late submission, we're not, we don't have to review, because it's late and it's, you know, disqualified. But the second submission was not a youth development, and so we were, we wanted to make sure that in our comparative criteria, we're tailoring to what was asked, or what we agreed on. Accepting the other offer, even if it's beautiful, is not really what we advertised for, I guess.
No, no, and I'm not saying that we're gonna accept the other proposal. I'm saying, I'm saying that as part of the process, it's our duty to evaluate what you guys qualify or disqualify.
Okay.
Because you have a qualifying criteria.
Yep.
What is the qualifying criteria to be able to take this project as good and valid?
And-
So because the, the only thing that I don't want to see is that eventually, on other particular projects, we're not gonna be able to see this because we're only allowed to vote yes or no, or favorite or unfavorable. It's like, no, we wanna be part of the process, and the process doesn't prohibit us from seeing it because that's part of the, the disposition-
Yeah, we want you guys to be involved, absolutely.
Any further questions, Council LaPlante?
So yes, what the Council President is getting involved here is a, a longer discussion. I'm not sure we're gonna get to a resolution tonight on it. Perhaps, a couple things, we can either talk informally about process, or we could talk more formally about process, because I, I have a, I've been around long enough, things seem to change, and the things are changing tonight, for example, that, and I'm not saying what you're, I'm not disputing the law that you're quoting and saying that there are prohibitions from releasing some information, I get that, but I just, we need to have a more, we need to have a better fundamental understanding of how we're to proceed, what's the council's role, what's the administration's role, and how do we work together? That's, that's my overriding question, or point. Now, to this prop, to this, I'm looking at it for the first time, I'm speed reading like a champ, but, and here, this is for $300,000. I believe that this organization, is it a nonprofit, is it a for-profit company or organization? Sueño's Basketball Incorporated. I'm gonna ask the-
It is a nonprofit.
It's not, so my question, thank you. So my question is, as a nonprofit, will they be paying taxes on this property or not?
I'm gonna refer to, I don't know how to answer that question.
So, to me, that's an important distinction, not a- So, to me, that's an important distinction, not a deal breaker. But I think we need to understand, if we are, we in the city have a lot of parcels that are under, are owned by nonprofits, and because they are nonprofits, they do not have to pay taxes. Sometimes they pay taxes, there's an agreement of some sort, or maybe there's another entity that represents, or they're associated with, that's more the for-profit that pays for taxes. It's usually a reduced amount, if it's a nonprofit. But I think that's important, at least for me and to the people that I represent, especially as we're going, there are dark clouds on the horizon for this budget, right, dark clouds. And if we're gonna be, and the good news is that we're gonna be selling this, that's good news, but we also have to think about the long-term implications as well, but we just need to go with our eyes open. So that's the first thing. The second thing was, you know, I was funding, I mean, I was thinking to myself, where are they getting the money? I didn't think they had that kind of pocket, but then in reading this very closely, or not closely, just looking at it very quickly, there is an authorization bill that's inside here that, and you're good enough to highlight it. It's the Acts of 2024, Chapter 238, an act relative to strengthening Massachusetts economic leadership. And inside this bill, there is a line item that says this, "Provided further than not less than five million dollars shall be expanded to Suenos Basketball for the construction or procurement of a new youth athletic facility center in Lawrence." Five million dollars. Now, I don't know if this is a bond, or this is like an earmark. So the question, if, as a city official, and as the executive branch, we should know whether or not this is actual cash, or it's a promise for cash that may or may not be honored because of things, if it's legislative. So is the city going to get the three hundred thousand dollars if it's banking on the money coming from here? And maybe it, there is, I just don't know the answer. And that's good to know, if you had, can you shed any light on that?
I know that there's an earmark for the money. I'm not too sure if it's coming out of those funds, or if they're going to be completing those funds on their own. So I wouldn't be able to clarify exactly if it's coming from those funds, or if it's coming from their own on top of this.
So the most important thing is, it was included in this package, which leads me to believe that that's important.
And that's how we made our decision, yes.
Or else it wouldn't be in here, so it's, I'm not sure if they're relying on this, or if this is just to give me comfort, that not only do they have a half a million coming, and they also have, this, they have three hundred thousand dollars in addition. So do they already have, so are we as a city comfortable that they have the finances to go ahead and to purchase this property for three hundred thousand dollars?
According to their supporting documentations, and everyone's votes, and their comparative criteria, the financial stability or ability to pay, they were considered advantageous in the process.
Can you, if you can-
Sure.
Can you show me where this is, and if you can't, we can talk about it later, but if you know where that is on here, I'd like to see it.
So in the RFP that we reviewed before we were able to even do this RFP process, the draft that we submitted to you guys, which I'm not sure if it was shared in the packages with you, this is just kind of our decision. I'm not sure if they give you the supporting documents from full council, so that you guys can review. But it was detailed in there, our comparative criteria is shared with you guys, so that you can see how we vote, whether it's advantageous, less advantageous, or not advantageous at all. And that's just the comparative criteria grid that we use to determine which property is, or which application is more suitable for us.
So one of my final comments is this. I'm actually thinking, I know this organization, I have a high regard for this organization. I think this organization is doing, it's, I knew when it first got started here, and it has grown quickly and strongly in just a few years. So it's a good thing. So that's good. I am really thrilled that we as a council didn't see a piece of grass and say, let's build on it to make some apartment houses. So I'm really happy that that didn't go forward, so.
We took that into consideration after Councilor Marmo asked us that.
So Councilor Marmo is a new saint for me, as far as I'm concerned, and I admire and respect her for all, for those comments. So thankfully, so that's that. But I will tell you this evening, if we're looking to move this tonight, I have hesitancy regarding the first question that we have, and I would like to get that answer before I can actually make a vote on this.
I'm gonna refer to Attorney Corrigan, who's representing Suenos, to see if he knows that answer for us.
Okay.
Good evening, councilors. Brian Corrigan, 122 Chestnut Street, Andover, Mass. I represent the applicant in this case, I've helped them through the RFP process. Obviously, there's a very extensive proposal before you, a lot of time and effort went into it. I mean, I think you need to take some time and review it personally. I'm surprised that it wasn't part of your review package, but nonetheless, the questions that have been raised, I think, are legitimate. My clients do have the support of the Mass Legislature in this case. They do expect to receive a significant amount of money from the state to fund the construction of the facility shown in the plans. They do have the ability to acquire the land without that funding, just through their own fundraising campaign, which has been well-established over their track record of operation. So no question that they can acquire the property. They do have the backing of the state, and there will be a very vigorous capital contribution campaign if and when this board approves their proposal and agrees to move forward with the sale of the land. So that's, you know, do they have the money sitting in a bank account right now? Of course not. It's a nonprofit organization. To answer your question, Council LaPlante, on taxing, my assumption is that they would not pay taxes, that they would be exempt. And the reason for that is that they, it's a charitable organization, providing a public service to the community. It seems to me that, I know that it's a big issue around the city, but this particular organization, for this particular purpose, would seem to be a prime candidate to have that exemption. But we can certainly talk further about that. And, you know, otherwise, happy to come back at the next meeting with my clients. We were not invited tonight, but I came just out of an abundance of caution and curiosity, because I didn't know what was gonna happen here. So I'm glad I did come. I'd like to have my clients here to answer questions, to address the concerns about financing, and how the state legislation came about, who sponsored that, what exactly the terms of that legislation may be. And with that, I would like to think, after you've had an opportunity to review the packet, see the plans, all the work that went into the engineering and architectural drawings, that you're gonna be very impressed by what my clients have in mind. And so I think we should come back if that's what the council would like us to do, and answer these questions for you with more detail.
Are you also a Council LaPlante? Do you have any further discussions or anything to add?
The only point, I have nothing to, yes, one thing to add, which is, but it's very short, which is this, I do want to take advantage of the time. There doesn't seem to be a rush to this, or else the attorney who represents the client wouldn't say, give us some time and review the package, so I don't think there's a rush on this, is what I'm hearing. And I would hope that we could take the time that apparently is afforded to us, that we can get some answers, and maybe look at the record a little deeper. Thank you. That's all I have to say, I'm done.
Council Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Malancher. Well, a couple of things that I wanted to kind of know. So so one thing that I would like to get, one thing that I would like to get is the qualifying criterias for both of the projects, so we can evaluate that. And let me ask you a quick question to Ms. Pasqual. So this review committee, the review committee, is you guys add upon to every project, or you guys have a new review committee every time they have a project?
We have the same board.
So have you ever sat with the mayor on any other project before?
Absolutely.
To make these determinations?
Well, we meet together as a small group, we review the packages, we discuss what's in front of us, and then we bring it up to the counselor, to, I'm sorry, to the mayor, as our recommendation.
So you submit to the mayor?
We share him, yeah, we share with him.
You guys provide him with a report, also why you guys have determined which is the best suitable project?
Right, so each of us get a comparative criteria, and we all have our own chance to vote. So we all vote as we review the packages as we go. Everybody is entitled to vote their own way, and then we review them, we tally them. There's like a point system that we have, and we submit that report to the mayor.
And so you guys made the, that's what I thought?
Yes.
The process is you guys get together-
Yep.
Discuss the project-
Yep.
Vote in favor or against, provide a project, provide a recommendation to the mayor based on the criterias they use.
On what we discussed, yes, correct.
The mayor sit on this committee, for this specific project?
We refer it to him. So we share our results with him, and then he signs, if he's in favor of our recommendation.
All right, the review committee then conduct an evaluation process in the presence of the mayor.
Right.
Committee members in attendance include Franz Urilo, Daniel McCarthy, Charlene Pasqual, Timothy Hughton, Perla Ortiz, and Ramona Galavayo. So you guys did that in front of the mayor, that's what it says?
These are the individuals that were present when we reviewed these.
So the mayor was there, or no?
Yes, he was.
And that's what I'm asking you, so basically before you guys present the report to the mayor, on this case, he was there present?
Yeah, but our reports go to him at the table. So we review, we vote, and then we submit the report to him.
So this is the first time that the mayor is present?
No, I said he's present.
He's present all the time?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So, and the reason that I'm asking these questions, and to fully transparent, I support the organization, Suenos Basketball, but when I'm in the process of evaluating any particular proposal in front of me, I need to refer to the process, not to anything else, and that's what I'm trying to do here. Just tell the mayor of the City of Lawrence to be careful when it comes to the process of disposition of a property. And the reason why I'm saying this, because back in December, during the dinner of this organization, the mayor promised this lot to the Suenos Basketball. And that's wrong. Just tell him, advise the mayor not to do that next time. Because back in December, during the Christmas dinner for this organization, he told the kids, the people present there, that the disposition of this lot was gonna go to Suenos. That is absolutely wrong. That's the reason as of why I'm trying to figure it out. Why this thing, he was present there to see if he was, he's present in a multiple project in the past. Because if that's the case, that he is not present in another project, but he was present on this one, could be categorized as potential intimidation to the member of the committee. And that's absolutely wrong. So that's the reason why I'm bringing this up. Because back in December, when during the Christmas party, he actually mentioned, the money is coming from the legislator, thanks to this legislator, but I gonna give you the, I gonna give you the lot. That is absolutely wrong. So just advise the mayor, next time, please, stay quiet and allow the process to go. Now, to the representative for the, to the person representing the organization, I would like to see a few things from them for next meeting. So I would like to, I would like to get from them some documentation, perhaps a statement or a commitment from the organization to help out the pipeline of the basketball in Lawrence. And what I mean by that, it's not just in Lawrence perhaps, but the academy, and the vice, and the athlete that represent Lawrence, I would like them to serve the city as a pipeline. And the reason why I'm saying this is because a lot of the students that go to Suenos, that are from Lawrence, they're here, they're based here, but a lot of the elite student, they tend to go out to potentially another school district. And it's been brought up to my attention that personally, they're doing that, allowing the students to go up there and to experience all the things, all their, to have all their type of experience. And that's fine, that's completely fine. But if we have a commitment between the organization and the city, we need to work together to raise up the level of basketball in the city as well. So such a issue, please, allow them to elaborate around that, because I think it would be extremely important. It's like, it's awesome when we have our kids, and it's awesome when they go out and come back. But it's good also to have a pipeline built then within the city. Especially when we invest in that organization. If we're not investing in it, on the organization, and it's a- But it was brought up to us, at least, I said to us, and I referred to the organization, me, question a bit about that. And that's something that we need to definitely talk about, and because it's a commitment. And that commitment need to reflect options and result towards the community, and especially in basketball. We love, I love basketball. I used to play basketball every day, I mean, every Sunday, sorry. Not anymore, but I wish that I can go back, but not yet, I'm not there yet. But, you know, it's essentially what, you know, bring a lot of joy to a lot of people. And that organization is awesome when it comes to bringing that joy to athletes. But we need to build that pipeline to perhaps Lawrence High School. And I hear that there is some situation going on around here and there, but, you know, talk to them. Bring the message, they will understand right away.
Sounds good.
Any further questions, discussions? Before we go into, well, Ms. Pasqual, again, I think, I don't know if you want to review. It's clear to me that, kind of like how our counselor, LaPlante, mentioned, I guess a lot of things have changed from previous housing committees that I wasn't a part of, I wasn't even a counselor back then. Maybe there's a shift in what's presented to us with newer city councilors. You know, with every administration, there's always, there's constant changes to the body of our city council. And therefore, there's different levels of knowledge as to what is required. And the same way that there's newer faces on this end of the table, there's newer faces on the other end as well. So, again, I hold myself responsible for maybe not setting something up between the members of this committee along with your department to kind of establish the protocols of how to run this meeting efficiently and accordingly. I know that I have been very clear, and I've established that whenever, anything from your department, whether it's blueprints, if there's documents, if there's any type of images, lots, that I love for us to be able to have it shown as a PowerPoint. So, you know, this is just something that I want to continuously reiterate. And the information that was provided by Suenos, the proposal, again, just by looking at the proposal itself, like Councilor Rodriguez was saying, it brings excitement, but it also brings further questions that we need to be asking the organization itself. So hopefully, at a later point in time, we'll have that discussion on how we could clarify how we're gonna be conducting- how we're gonna be, uh, conducting our meetings and what is required on our end, um, in order for us to not have these same discussions over and over and over again. Um, with that being said, um, I am looking for a recommendation regarding this item.
I can motion to table this item.
Okay, a motion has been made to table, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I get roll call, ma'am? We're gonna do a roll call.
You should actually say, I wanna be recused from this vote, so you can walk out. Just ask to be recused, so just let her know you wanna be recused.
She can't say abstain?
It's, that's not, it's, she needs to, it's better for her.
So, um, for potential conflict of interest, uh, our counselor from District A, Fidelina Santiago, is recusing herself. So, um, if we could just do a roll call of this vote? Councilperson Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Martha Plant?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Vivian Marmol?
Yes.
Okay, okay, the, this item has been tabled, all right, thank you.
It's up to you, Madam Chair, I, I would ask if there is, is there, is there anything urgent, is what I would ask.
Um, so my apologies, um, Ms. Pasqual, I, I wanted to talk to you personally, like off the record, but might as well, um, say it on record. Um, it's a lengthy meeting, and we do our best to make sure that we are addressing every item, but we also have an important budget meeting that started at seven, um, started at seven. Um, and it's already 7:30, um, so with that being said, uh, I didn't wanna disrespect you by completely disregarding you and your time, um, in not addressing all these items that we have before us, but again, um, this, we have another meeting, and I think it's also disrespectful for the, that subcommittee meeting and the members that attend that meeting that arrived on time, and because of how lengthy and trying to squeeze everything in, where, where, I, I, I don't wanna disregard, uh, the meeting that we have in place for budget.
I also, if I can add, these, um, these items that are to come are the Home Equity Theft Act, and we are on a strict timeline with these. I met with all of you guys, um, one-on-one in my office, after I invited you guys to discuss the disposition of properties and the home equity thefts, so I just want us to note, um, that we are on a budget. I'm not sure if we can do a special meeting at some point, or if we can meet as soon as possible, just to avoid any issues moving forward, 'cause as a city, we could be, um, held liable or even sued as neighbor, neighboring cities have already been. We have to get back to the court about these pros, about these properties in particular, so I just wanna keep that in mind.
I completely understand.
So, so I, I think it would be helpful, Madam Chair, um, do, through you, do, do we have a definitive time? I think we work best when, I think, when we have a deadline. So if we know what the deadline is next Tuesday, well, we're gonna meet before Tuesday, we'll meet Monday, it's, it's not next Tuesday, I know, but, but do you know when that deadline is, so we can?
I can share the deadline by email to Madam Chair, and that way we can, um, adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
Or schedule accordingly.
Yeah, that'll be great, 'cause if we have to schedule, um, before our city council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, we have to do it at Monday, then, you know, so be it. So I'll, I'll be waiting for that email, just to make sure you can let us know what that deadline is, and I'll have the meeting off for just housing, try to make sure that there's no other subcommittees meetings scheduled right after, in order for us to be able to take our time with each item, and not, nobody feels rushed.
I understand.
Um, any other questions, discussions? Okay.
Ma'am.
Can I, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, type, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on. We had a table with each item?
You, you, you don't really need to, if we don't deal with it, it's gonna stay there, it's like, it's not going away.
Yeah.
The only thing I, well, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, you have the floor.
No, I mean, that's fine, we don't have to, it's our new business, we haven't deal with it.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no objection, if none of us are objected, I don't think it's gonna be a big deal. I, oh, dude, one thing I was gonna add is, and I'm the worst offender, so trust me when I say this, if we could just keep all these documents somewhere, so they don't have to print it all out again.
No, no.
That would be a good idea, so I'm, I'm probably the guy that's gonna lose it, but I'm gonna work my best, yeah.
I do recommend, you know, uh, if possible, try to be ready to present this. This is something that I would love for our viewers to be able to, um, be aware as to what the projects that we're, we're discussing. Um, and I'm pretty sure if approved for, at city, at a city council level, they're gonna, they're gonna want, um, they're gonna wanna present this as well, um, so just wanna forewarn you.
So just to clarify, you want a presentation?
If, well, presentation, if there's gonna be any images or...
Besides what I shared?
Well, specifically the, the Suenos Basketball, yes.
Got it, yep, I understand that, yep, that part, I thought we were talking about home equity, yep.
Madam Chair, can you say?
Digitally?
Yes.
All right, motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, probably second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and the ayes have it, thank you very much, and my apologies for the inconvenience.